All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, May twenty first. Like to call the meeting to order. Father John Hollinger was set to give our invocation. However, he may be running behind, so I will use the prayer for elected to get us going and he can offer a prayer if he gets here, so. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits. Who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people, listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures. Welcoming those seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Hearing none. If you guys would give me a second, I need to pull up our minutes. Since we had our. Agenda printed, I did not click and read them. So just if you could just give me one second, I just wanna read them before I fall for a vote on that. And thank you for bringing those for us, Mark. Okay. For Walnut Township vacancy or. Office of Walnut Township Treasurer will be vacant the day after certification. Or we can. I mean, we talked about it, so.
It's been done.
Yeah, and it's posted. So, okay. No, this was good because I refreshed my memory of. Another thing we need to talk about, so. Sorry. I would look for a motion to approve the minutes for May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sure. Say it.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Rivas?
Yeah, I would just like to. Note this National EMS Week, and so I recognize our. Both our rescue personnel and our EMS staff and all the work they do and. What a great program they run out there. A lot of transitions lately. They've stepped up and done a great job and. Always hear really positive comments about professionalism. On a side note, I was at the hospital yesterday and the night before for a few hours visiting someone and. Our position in our room was located perfectly to watch the ER. So I actually got to watch about four different trips in with the ambulance and watched the personnel and they just did a great job. They were very professional and. They're impressive.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I really don't have much, but I wanna congratulate all the grads in the county, everything from college to high school to middle school. It's a big step in their lives and I wanna wish them well. And now that Benedictine is even more famous with the speech that was given by Butker. I, I. Don't know if it's worthy of all the hype, but anyway, it's put Benedictine on the map again, so. But I wanna congratulate all the grads.
I will just echo what they said. Congrats to the grads and thank you to all of our EMS staff. We appreciate the job you do every day around the clock, so thank you for that. Okay, Patrick Henderson County Counselor, purchase order approval for Lexus Nexus Legal Research.
The County Law Library former. Formerly provided. Legal research. Logins for all the members of the bar and so my notes through there. That has stopped in April. Just because they. They ran out of. No, that's a. Income to continue to do that, so. Both County Attorney and I were left with having to find. Another vendor. There are two major players in that. That's Lexus and Westlaw. Both of them have state contracts. You're familiar with these, the state contracts to buy cars and whatnot. So we looked into both of those, both of the. Both of those vendors had sales representatives who said, oh, we can beat the. State contract price. If you have, well, we can beat that. That contract price, but. We both did our research. I think the Lexus product will work for me. I think the West product worked for me as well. But the West product on the. The state contract was a hundred and eighty dollars per user and I think the one that. For, for kind of basic setup and I don't know what Sherry. Landed on for hers. The Lexus one that I found is a hundred and thirty seven dollars per month. That's a little bit cheaper. It does have the standard language in there about appropriation, so if for some reason. We decide we could get a better deal if we were in a bundle together. That would work, the. Westlaw told us that we needed to have at least three users to, before we could get any sort of. Break for. For having a bunch. So anyway, I'm proposing a Lexus Plus subscription. It is a hundred and thirty seven dollars per month. I had a typo on the. Purchase order that I had submitted earlier, so I replaced it. That's a total of nine hundred and fifty nine dollars to get. From. May through. Through the end of the year. It does have escalators. It goes up by. Something like seven dollars per year, seven dollars per month. For the second, third year.
He's one user for you.
Just one user for me.
Seriously, she does what she does.
Well, she just has one right now. When she hires another attorney, there likely will be a second.
Okay.
And if, when that happens, if we can get a better price, I don't have a problem switching to the Westlaw one, but. This, this is cheaper than the. Westlaw that was quoted even at the. The bundled prize, so it was one eighty.
All right, so I'd look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our County Counselor. For Alexis subscription for legal research from May to the end of the year for nine hundred and fifty nine dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, salute. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes. Three to zero.
So this is subscription in this budget for next year or a full year?
No.
Do we need to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a purchase order. To Mark, Mid-America Regional Council for the Appraiser for the twenty twenty four Regional Aerial Photography. In the amount of twenty seven thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars and twenty five cents. This was originally discussed back in twenty twenty two when we were forecasting. And our previous appraiser, Mrs. Thompson, had budgeted approximately forty five thousand dollars for it. And wanted it to, when we were in the pickball and hitting R and R. She asked to remove that forty five thousand from her budget to allow us to help hit R and R, so she wanted it paid out of ARPA. Fast forward, our current appraiser got the. Purchase price, so it's less twenty seven thousand, six forty four, twenty five. However, it was never added back into the appraiser budget for twenty twenty four. So. Still asking to stay on course and pay this out of ARPA. So I'd look for a motion to approve this amount of twenty seven thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars, twenty five cents. To be paid out of ARPA for the twenty twenty four Regional Aerial Photography.
So move.
Okay, moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Do you want me to put a date on this? I changed it to ARPA. Okay, so I'll just change, I'll put the date of five twenty one and we can initial that. That way you have, yep. CLQ, there you go. Thank you. Okay, ten fifteen. So we have an executive session for non-elected personnel. Get to that email really quick. With. Maintenance Director, Finance Director. HR Director. Commissioners. And County Counselor.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, I think you're all up that email, so if you're like, what? I was just.
Okay. Personal matters. All move that the Board of County Commissioners request an executive session. At ten fourteen. AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be. Maintenance Director, Finance, HR, the three commissioners and County Council.
Okay, moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. We will go into executive session for thirty minutes. We're back in open session. Thank you. Appreciate it. County Commission, Courthouse East Door Discussion. So we had mentioned months ago about opening the east door, east doors. Now that. The treasure upgrade was done, we have. You know, cameras and all the things. Just wanted to bring that back up to see if you guys. Are good with moving forward with that, to allow people to come in and out of our east doors.
Did we let everyone know that we were gonna have?
So last week, I talked to. I talked to the clerk and deeds and appraisers office, because they're the ones that would be affected as far as people coming in like right there. And with appraisers changing, not having that window there anymore and kind of a different layout to the office, everyone. Was good with it, so.
Talked to District Court or the County Attorney?
No.
My thoughts on that, we could open it back up. I don't see a problem, but then. If there's still a sign, which they actually could lock those doors, sell it on a court date, if the court said. Let's control access, maybe they got a hot case, you know. I mean, to me, there's a way you could still do that, put the sign down there or something, like a temporary for a day if you had to.
So I guess for me, and it's not that I forgot to talk to him, I just didn't think to talk to him, because. When we had these discussions in the past of why we locked them, it was always that focus on the first floor. And. To me, if you're coming in the north door and going up, like, I guess.
Yeah, what's the matter?
They actually were involved in that initial conversation. Sherry was here and, I mean, I know that she's been able to beat up her.
Yeah, she's true.
Yeah, right, but you still have the court, the actual courtroom, you know, and the judges, I think should.
No, absolutely. Yeah, no, it wasn't that I did.
Come in that door, you could be up in Judge Fresh's chambers in like thirty seconds if you were.
Yeah, the front door, it's thirty five. I mean, so.
Right, but you can come in this door, because I go up those stairs. Frequently during the day and I don't see a single soul, so. You can get in, if you come in that door, no one would be alerted to anything. Or like if they were coming by my office. To go up there, then we could see that maybe something was going on in them, if there was something.
I know, courts get ready to change some doors and fobs as well.
June fourth.
June fourth, so maybe after those fobs are in, then we would open it up.
Well, and I agree with you. I definitely want their feedback. I just, I remember the focus being more of like your office because. Everybody and anybody was right there, but now, like, we're making steps, we're getting people into, into areas of.
I was initially concerned about it, and that's still a concern of mine, but Pat and I had had someone that was really volatile, that were upset after a tax sale. And they were very upset in court and they left and they were very upset. And our courthouse security officer was off that day for a doctor's appointment. And I kind of watched both doors for a while, because I wasn't sure if he was gonna come back or. Or not, you know, I mean, it's not like that I was afraid of it, but certainly cautious of it. And I was concerned for. The clerk's. Office right there, if they come in the door, you know, right there and. It's, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely solicit feedback from the courts and county attorney. Further the discussion, but when I talked to him last week, the other offices were.
The County Attorney definitely has changed her whole setup, but. I would think once the fobs are in for the court, it'd be a whole different discussion.
It would definitely be an improvement for them, but I. I would rather. Err on the. Side of being cautious and not do it too quickly until we know they're all on board.
Especially if it's June fourth, that's a couple.
People have went through the thing now, they're kind of. I hate the word train, but. They're aware now that they need to use the north door. If we open it up and then switch it back in a month. It's, it's gonna.
Yeah, no, we don't want to do that.
We don't want to do this back and forth thing. We want to make sure that it's the right thing to do when we do it.
We've been talking about it for months now and we never really talked about it to have like, what do we think? So now, I'm glad that we're having that discussion to know. Like what the path is and hearing Brian say June fourth and getting feedback from upstairs and thank you for bringing that up.
And maybe, maybe it would be best to wait until after they, the courts do their renno. And that, but not type of stuff, because they might be using like small courtroom, not even in their own offices and things like that, so. They're gonna be here and there and everywhere. And disrupted, which is harder to do. Anything with security or watching or cameras where they're gonna be located if they're down for, so.
A few months away.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Away, so.
Yeah. That's, it's within.
All your handicap, I'm still gonna come to the front door anyway, or door, because obviously it's much easier, but, you know. I see that door on the east more of an exit door, it's moving to be used for now, because. It's easy.
The stairs are precarious anyway. I mean, that's not even for someone, you know, like my parents who are still very mobile. That wouldn't be a good idea for them to go down those stairs at all. They're just precarious.
A lot of people still use.
Maybe that's another issue is that we don't, if we think about waiting on that, because they are so precarious and we don't want people using them. Because I know people, there were quite a few accidents back. Before we, you know, when they were still open, people would step off of that, that's why it's painted yellow. They would fall there. I mean, we had. Quite a few falls out there when those were open.
Maybe the safety committee should look at that and.
I think they, they're the ones that got the. Yellow painted, I believe.
Yeah, that's. Maybe first look at it before you open it back up.
Well, this is good discussion. Now we have like.
Some news to.
Some follow-up items to make sure that we have all the info, so, thank you. Mark Siltner, Finance Director, Transfer of Funds Approval, Senior Village Reserve to Reserve and Purchase Order Approval, ARPA Funds special.
So you took care of the one for the ARPA, that was to the mark.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
But in. It's. Replacement. There was a. Check we received. For Senior Village and it was in signs payment. It was for seven thousand. Four sixty eight, sixty three. So I received that money in. The copy of the receipt is back here. And then I'm looking for this purchase order to be signed to pay that money out to. Atchison Senior Village for inside.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from our Finance Director. To Atchison Senior Village in the amount of seven thousand, four hundred and sixty eight dollars, sixty three cents. It's going through the Senior Village Pass Through Fund. It's a twenty twenty four payout for Senior Village monies received from N Sign. That is after the sale date of services. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. Three to zero.
Thank you. The next item that I have is the. A transfer. For commission approval. It's to move Senior Village Reserve Money into the County General Reserve Money. There's three different reserves that Senior Village had, Fund One ninety eight, One ninety nine, and Two O One. For a grand total to be moved of two hundred and fifty two thousand. Three hundred and seventy five dollars and ninety five cents. There's documentation attached that shows the fund balances and the journal entry. After it's made, they would zero out and the reserve fund would be increased by that amount.
Okay, perfect. And then the only fund we would have left with Senior Village is our proceeds from the sale that we're keeping there to take care of the stragglers.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. I look for a motion to approve this Atchison County Transfer as presented from our Finance Director, moving. Two hundred fifty two thousand, three hundred and seventy five dollars and ninety five cents from the Senior Village Reserve Fund to the County General Reserve Fund. And we're approving this fund consolidation. Which is taking Senior Village Reserve Funds to the County General Reserve.
So move. Say it.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Quick question, I guess, on that, sort of after the fact.
Okay.
So. But we're showing Senior Village it's a deficit now, cash flow of two hundred and thirty five thousand, thirty six dollars.
Correct.
So in essence, what they had in reserved negates.
Yeah.
Well, so really, we'll cut back to your balance.
Right.
Or we're actually a couple.
Right, if you would net the, net the four together, yeah.
Right, so for the public to know that, so. You found that you're not behind. Not eight ball on that.
And we're still collecting some revenue.
Right, and it's more, yeah, what, do you have any idea, you talk to us next with receivables, what's hanging out there?
I will get a better aged report.
Okay. Next week, we have, then there's cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So the EMS Commissioner report for April twenty twenty four, we received the email from Corey for that. I would look for a motion to receive and file that.
So move.
So moved in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Finish business, I have. Couple of things here. Okay, there it is. So we spoke last week about the constituent that reached out to me about the towing service to get added to that. We received an email from Sheriff Lori explaining kind of the history of it with a resolution eleven eighty five. That was established a rotation towing call list. From Commissioners back in two thousand. So I just wanted to visit with you guys about that, kind of after reading. The email as well as hearing from our dispatch director. And who it involves from, you know, Corey's feedback, everybody. It makes sense to me that we would rescind that resolution and allow him to handle the towing services in their. In their hands, as far as how, you know, they have two towing services now that they rotate and she sent us that schedule, it's like every other week or month or. But to get someone added in, then that gives everyone direction and clarity to send them. Over there to get, get on board and we have nothing to do with that, so just wanted to visit with you guys about that. I would be in favor of rescinding the resolution.
And, and I don't know whether, do we replace it with a revised, so there's be three or. Do.
Well, they'll probably have to develop that schedule, wouldn't they? Rotation, everything, set that up.
That's what I, I felt it should be. That. I mean, if we take it out of the Board of County Commissioners' hands, I mean, it's all affecting their services, like them, they're the one that deal with it, handle it. They can create their policy and the public, when they ask us. This is what you do. You contact them and get set up.
Yeah, this would probably fill in joint communication before coordinating things like that, but I think between the sheriff and.
So, I, I guess I just have a couple of questions. The, if you've got, if we had two or three. More that would decide they wanted in on that too. Are, is the county obligated to. To use them at all, or is it at the discretion of. Would it be under the sheriff, or is it would be this, or who, who is the one that you're saying would be in charge of?
So the resolution he sent us from two thousand. Explains that there's a rotation list of businesses within the county that are maintained and filed by the Atchison County Communication Center. With one designated business hereafter referred to as business. So basically what they're doing, they have two right now vendors. And they're rotating. They have it on the list and Kim's managing that. Whenever a dispatcher receives a request from the Sheriff's Department. Requesting a tow truck to remove a vehicle, the dispatcher shall call the business. So it's, it's just. In essence, taking the commission out of. Of the equation.
Yeah.
Because it, it's exactly what this, this Carter's tow wants to be added to the list. And they call over there, well, this resolution says it's up to us, so they point us over here, but we don't use it, it's them using it, so it's just cleaning it up, I think, for clarity.
So it would be under, it would be under the sheriff, would be.
That would be the direction, the law enforcement would, because they're the ones who use it, according to Corey and according to.
Sounds like they alternated the city one week and the county. Or like different services and they alternate. That's kind of how I read it.
Well, I mean, I'm, based on his email, the sheriff and PD are, are, are the primary.
Right.
Users of it, so.
So they kind of alternate each week with each service, so this is a free, freeway rotation, which they can, they can schedule that.
Are they. Do, would we feel that? The sheriff would be obligated to use any of them that. Applied? I, I guess what I'm getting down, because then it would be out of, out of our hands into that, into the sheriff's hands. That they could. Just. Wouldn't even need to put them on a rotation. They could pick one and go with that, that, see where I'm going is like, do we want to. This, even a sense of direction of, we would like to have all of them that. Apply that are qualified beyond the rotation, but if there's no rules. We don't know what we're gonna get. And it could be that they choose one and, and how is that. Selection gonna be done? You see what I'm saying?
They approve insurance requirements, things like that, I don't know.
So I'm sure they do, because it says each business shall provide the list of services they're able to provide, a minimum charge for such services. And it shall be the duty and business to keep the current list on file with the sheriff. I mean, it's already kind of, it just takes us out of the equation for. Having to be part of it when we, I mean, it's just an extra step for a constituent trying to get signed up.
Right.
But yes, I think there should be minimum requirements, I'm sure there will be, but do I need to set those? I don't think.
I, I don't think you're quite, what I'm saying is that in the future, there could be someone that's perfectly qualified, applies. And they're not put on the rotation. Even though they're Atchison County taxpayer and they're a business in the county, see what I'm saying? Even though they're Atchison County taxpayer and they're a business in the county, see what I'm saying? There's, there's nothing that would obligate. Or even give the sheriff any direction that they should be included if they're.
So I feel like as an elected official, that's his problem, not mine.
Okay, well, that's what I wanna, I, I'm just vetting this out. I don't know, I don't have a, a, any skin in the game, only it's like. Uh, I wanna know what we're, I mean. I don't wanna just back away from it's like somebody else's business. So then if it turns out that, oh, I'm a taxpayer, I've got a towing business, I'm not being utilized. Uh, okay, I just wanna know that it's for good or bad, it, it's all gonna be under the sheriff. I mean, I'm.
That's a fair concern.
No, because we, we have, we try to utilize.
Right, it could be county-based.
So we try to use, um, businesses, private businesses and, and, uh.
Well.
Uh, do RFPs and, and things to encourage. And here it's like, I don't know the direction and I have no, uh, I hope the sheriff don't, thank him, Anna Sheriff. I, I, it's, no, it, it's just that, I just wanted to see how, think of how this will be. Done and may, it's almost without.
So.
It'd be with, without any, um, guidance or.
So our two current companies that were rotating are both Atchison County businesses. And this third gentleman inquired to me is an Atchison County resident and has a towing service. And so. I assume they're gonna continue to remain local. I mean, because it makes sense, right? If you're in Atchison County, you need to tow, you want them here quick, you want them.
And I know when they have information, they need something, uh, heavier duty, they've, they've got places they call, so. One group out last year, I was building with those big semi trailers or tow trucks and things before. So if, if these guys don't have the right equipment, they do find it.
What, what the sheriff has proposed is that he would have an agreement with each of the providers. And one of the things that we looked at, looked at other resolutions and how other counties do it. Is that there's kind of a consumer protection component that goes into it too. I think we've been very fortunate here because we have two providers that are pretty in tune with, with that, but. The, the stories that you hear from places that aren't regulated. Uh, involve people showing up and towing and then saying, well, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars for the tow. Uh, yeah, but nobody, nobody asked me that at the time. Well, it's your responsibility to ask before we tow. Um, or the, the service charges being, uh, unreasonably high. Uh, but we, those aren't problems or complaints that I've ever heard from people locally. But those things are in the agreement that, that he's proposed.
Yeah.
Um.
So.
Maximum charges, maximum mileage requirements, simply be able to have at least two people. Has there been some that have charged, well, I'll tell you a car, but another hundred dollars, I'm gonna give you a ride back into town, that sort of thing. Uh, so I, I think it could be dealt with, uh. Th- this comes up so seldom, as you can tell, in, in twenty-four years.
Good.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not an issue that's come up, so.
And I think to ease your mind too, if you look at the rough draft he proposed, he does have some of those items in there. So maintain a business physically located within Atchison County, Kansas. And then he also put in there, um, commercial general liability that like limits, there's, he, his rough draft of. The contract for services, I mean, it's really.
Yeah.
It's pretty that, that.
Yeah, I, I've read that. I just. Uh, you know, I just had questions about whether we. Not necessarily had a list that we mandated, because that's one thing about having a resolution there with them on, well, those are the two until you rescind it, but. Um, would there be something like a wording that was like, if they. They're county-based, they shall be considered. Um, you know, and then that way whoever applies or leaves, you don't have to have a resolution every time. The list would change, you know, it.
So Pat, question on the resolution, if we rescind this and take the VOCC out of the equation. Do, I mean. Do we need something further to say that they go over there or is it just known that when someone calls us? Call law enforcement, they have the application process or, like, we don't need a.
Depends on whether you want, how, how much you want to make certain that. These issues that we've talked about are in the agreement, because i- if. You know, you know what's in the draft of the sheriff's agreement and most of those things are in there. Uh, we talked about a couple of other things that, uh, we, I had noticed a couple of other things that I thought should be added and I haven't talked to Jack about those yet. And I don't think those are gonna be a problem, but to the extent that you want to have certainty that. Uh, that those will be followed, those. Minimum standards, if you will, then you need to have a resolution. To the extent that you're satisfied that they're taken care of without you having the resolution, you don't need one. So.
So this tow service, they also have to have an agreement with the city then?
Well.
Is that, I was wondering if that way, maybe we should make sure the contracts are at least marry up halfway close, I mean.
Well, I think he's envisioning the same agreement being used, that all three would be, would sign off on it.
Okay, we'll see again, yeah.
Yeah. And the other, the other issue that I heard about in other places is just whenever there's a call that, uh, wreckers would start showing up. And I've seen, might have three wreckers that are on scene and they don't even need one and it's just causing congestion.
Yeah.
Or whatnot. We don't have those, we don't have those issues here, I think, because we have.
The rotation.
Yeah. So to the extent that you want to make sure that. You have rules in place, then you need to have rules in place through a resolution, to the extent you're satisfied that. Uh, the sheriff is looking out for those matters, then I, you don't need a resolution.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that one. As elected official, you're gonna do what's right and. I mean.
If you don't, you'll pay the price.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at, I'm like, I, I don't. If it had something to do with us, then I would feel differently, but like, from the feedback we got from our departments and how they're currently handling it. Doesn't really affect us. And, and also, if we rescind this, then it gives direction to the gentleman quicker to. Go get signed up and get added to the rotation and, and, and.
I would agree. I've had, uh, I would say I have zero comments the entire time I've lived in this community about any negative things on the record service. And we have certain positive things about being on scene and all that, but, I mean, it's, it's, it'll be an issue here.
So I would look for a motion to rescind Resolution Number Eleven eighty-five. Um, establishing a rotation towing call list. Um, that was put into place by the County Commission in two thousand.
I think you need to adopt another resolution to do that. I don't have one drafted, but.
Okay, so we do need another resolution.
You need a resolution to repeal it.
Okay, so can we do that next week?
Yeah, I, yeah, how long are we gonna be here today?
Or, yeah, we could do it today. That would be great, because I just wanna get this gentleman an answer, so he knows how to get signed up and. Um.
Yeah, I think that's a completely different issue than whether or not you repeal this resolution, but.
Well, but.
The, the point is, we feel it.
Direction.
Just say. Call sheriff.
Yep, absolutely.
You gotta tell us.
Yep, no, yeah, and everybody has direction. The sheriff has direction. Okay, now it's. Now it's on me and, so, okay, so we'll wait on that one. Um, any other unfinished business? You wanna talk about?
Yeah, so. Um, has some complaints, uh, regarding a, uh, home that's located outside city limits that is, uh. Been disrepair, uh. A number of issues that definitely probably qualify it for some consideration of remediation or. Whatever that means, whether it's a demo, whether it's, uh, some enforcement, but, uh. What is our process for that and how do we go about, uh? We have neighbors who are pretty upset about the condition of the house next door. It's gonna affect their property values, I'm sure.
Has this been turned over to any KES?
No, that's where we're at right now, so I don't know how. How far do they take it? What's our role? Do we need some official inspector go out there? Does any KES? I always think of them as, uh, septic and. Bad, like dump sites or something about.
Well, they've done everything from rodents to animal fecal matter, uh, all of that.
So I don't think you can get inside this house, but I mean, there's, there's issues with the house and from the outside as well, so. What are the, what are the lines, I guess? Do they do this? Do they, do we go somewhere else for this?
Well. I think that's the first place where, you know, see what the, see what their recommendation is. I mean, if it's something beyond their scope, I think they would tell us immediately.
So I have some input on this, because it's, it's a challenge for me as a commissioner, because I agree. Nuisances are probably the top complaint that I get, right?
I would agree.
And, and also, I want to be able to help with this. But in the past, and this doesn't go against any KES, they're going by the resolution that county commissioners have set historically. Um, which, Pat, if you had that handy and could send us a copy of that, that'd be helpful. I was just looking through my file, but the nuisance one. Um, but in essence, it talks about just what Eric said, rodents and, and all of these things. Um, when they've came in the past and we've had those discussions, they had a former employee that was kind of going out and doing those things, right? But said that there's no contact made with owner, like basically they go by, take photos and all of things. As a commissioner, a- and in that discussion. It was hard for me because they talk about rodents, so. If you have a lot of stuff, right, on your property and then rodents could live there. But then in the same conversation, it's like, well, if you built a privacy fence, you know, that would take care of it. So in my brain, I'm going. So you don't really care about the rodents, because as long as you put up a fence and hide the junk, then, so. It's hard for me to wanna get behind enforcing something that sounds bizarre and, and ridiculous. So I almost think, if we're gonna tackle nuisances, we have to do it from a platform of common sense. And have something that has teeth that says, if you have trash, because I have some properties on my nuisance list. But straight up have trash. No one's occupying it, there's trash. And when the wind blows, that trash is in your yard, in your yard, in your yard. Now, that's affecting others. That's where I feel like. We need to have something where we can go out and not talk about rodents, but talk about trash. And so I, I, in my opinion, it needs an overhaul. If we're able, if we wanna accomplish what our constituents want us to accomplish. Um, because I don't think it's talking about, you know, antique equipment and feel, like, and fields and different things, like, there's. Crack. I have properties with, you know, junk and trash and no one's living there. Um, so those are like, for me, kind of those target properties of, what do we wanna do? How do we word it to where it makes sense and you have a valid argument of like. Hey, Alan, I drove by your property, I know you don't live there and there's trash there. And I've had these conversations, it's like. Well, I know, other people are dumping that trash there. I don't want it there. Okay, well, let's take steps to get, you know. The, then we talk about a, a process, um, but that's been a hiccup for me of. I can't talk about rodents. We need to talk about the problem. We gotta talk about the trash, like, and not blame it on rodents, because. I just don't, uh, I don't know. And, and putting a fence up to hide it, like. I don't want people to get in, in the driving around of like, oh, that doesn't look good, like. Enforcing people to fence it off, like that's not fixing the problem, right, of the trash. Um, so I think it just comes down to hearing all of our opinions. That's mine from my district and some of the properties on my list is. I wanna talk about the problem, and the problem is the trash that's blowing into the neighbor's yards and. It's not the rodents. And, I mean, rodents come with hayfields, right? Ro- rodents came, come with several things of. We gotta just call it what it is. So, um, that's kind of where my, my head's on.
I think to go to that extent, you're talking about zoning.
I don't think so. I think a resolution's explaining.
Nuisance abatement, that's what you're talking about. That's not zoning, it's.
Well.
Especially if you don't define it too strictly. I mean, if you start worrying about everybody having an old tractor in the corner of a hayfield here. That's ridiculous, but if you're talking about trash or.
Trash, that's what I'm talking about.
Or, you know, buildings that are literally falling in. I mean, that, that's a whole other world.
I think to get to the specificity that you're talking about, you're gonna have to do some sort, sort of zoning.
I disagree. I think you're, and, and a KCCA, and I have some, um, examples. So I haven't had time to read through them yet, but examples of what their nuisance abatement letters look like. Because we can accomplish things with resolutions, just like what we should be doing with the rodents, right? But as a commissioner, I don't want to follow this bogus rodent thing. And go around and try to enforce nuisances when that's not what it is. It's, it's the trash, right? It's the unoccupied properties that are full of trash that are affecting the neighbors by blowing. You know, onto other people's property.
Where it is, it's usually absentee owners. Uh, sometimes family member that, that they'll fix mom and dad's old house up someday and they don't do it and. Or it's a family squabble about a house or a barn and garage, whatever, and it's just left to go.
But also.
Kinda sad.
And also, when you identify them, I've had really good luck, like the last one I had just a few months ago. I contacted the owner and they've relocated to Douglas County. There was a divorce involved. They know what's happening and they had a timeline and a process of like, how they're gonna mitigate it. And even being willing to sell to someone wanting to clean it up. And so like having those conversations, but. It's an easier conversation when you're talking about the root of the problem and not some bogus. Rodent nuisance, like, resolution. And that's, again, my opinion of, of. Of what they look like. And I think each property is gonna be different. Um, of what that looks like, but.
Yeah, that's what, the latest one I had has been, uh, the owner's gone, there's been, I think there's been a divorce or something. But the, uh, the people around there actually know who this person is and have ways to contact them and they will not respond, so. They're getting nowhere and they're very frustrated, so I think at some point, we gotta do something.
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would give them any KES, take the first pass at this, while we start figuring something out.
Yeah, I just.
I don't think we have to do anything over the top, but I think there's just some basic. I mean, good neighborness as far as, like, there's one where they're north of Roswell. That whatever they wrote, there's just piles of trash on their porch and it, the one that lives there, it's one of them.
Well, and the last one I just spoke about about a couple of months ago, it's like, literally, it was encroaching into the neighbor's field to where they're. Planting around the trash that's, you know, and so it's like, okay, we gotta make, we gotta make a phone call and it went well. They understand and, you know, and then if we have that process of.
Yeah.
Giving some, some grace, but also like. This is now, we, we don't allow just trash on vacant properties, because it's affecting. When it's affecting someone else, then it's a problem, right, of like.
Yeah, big soul density, you know, if you're, if you, your old farmhouse, and you built your new house. Nearby and the old farmhouse has fallen in, but there's nobody around for a half mile. No one's worried about that.
At all, at all.
But you've got, especially along the edge of town here and some of the areas in the county where people are sort of built closer together and. Some of those places go into a dumpy, it's, it's tough.
So we pass a resolution, then who's gonna enforce that?
I think we.
Conversation.
Yeah.
But, I mean, no, I mean. We're not, hire someone to, to go out and, and enforce it, to, to be that person that's. I mean, that's kind of where we have any KES there.
Right.
They do the, the letters, they do the, uh, get evidence, the, the photograph, document all of this.
But they were never having the conversation with the people. Like, because remember Mr., well, he's a former employee and had said like, I'm not, which I think, maybe now that. It's changed over to new people in place. Uh, we kind of had that conversation of Martha being willing to go with, like, with us in that communication of like. She's not afraid, they're like, hey, we need to, you know, having the conversations and.
Yeah, we should start there with them, because.
No, I agree. I just think they're going off of our resolution.
But if we have to do a nuisance abatement, let's just say we're kind of in a forced situation, someone's gotta clean it up. If we have to pay to clean it up, then we put a lien on the property to collect the money and hope to get it someday.
That, that's problematic. We, uh, there is specific statutory authority to allow cities to do that, it does not allow counties to do that.
Right.
And, uh, so that's a legislative change maybe that could happen, but we don't have the authority to do that and can't, uh. The, the opinion has been that we couldn't do a charter resolution to get through that either, but, um.
Can do home rule on that.
Well, we have statutory home rule, not constitutional home rule.
Okay.
Uh, that, like, cities have, cities don't need to do it because they have statutory authority to do it, but the.
Right.
The legislation that does that does not apply to counties, so, um, you know, what, what we have done. I, I don't know if you could call it success, you could call it successfully if you're looking at big picture, but it took, you know, it takes a year. To get it done, but what we've done is filed the, uh, lawsuits over nuisances and have gotten. You know, a few properties cleaned up going that route.
Okay.
And.
Whatever process we have, I think we just, this one may not go to that level, but let's start somewhere.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, uh, we could start the process with any KES reaching out. Yeah, I I agree. I think uh, we could start the process with any KES reaching out and. It sounds like there's a lot of background information that could be shared with them so that they're not rediscovering. The history that we already know.
Well, and I think for me, it's identifying the problem, not just the rodent excuse. Because all the ones that have called constituents who have called me about properties and you go by, it's. Literally because it's affecting someone else. It's either blowing out in the road, it's in, you know, in the ride away or on someone else's property. And it's 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 trash. It's not. Speculating whether or not it's a harboring rats, you know, it's it's trash.
Well, to me, it's just kept at the elemental level of, when when things are really gross or bad, we don't wanna create an HOA throughout the campaign. That's not where we're going.
Not at all, but also, you you wanna have that. Like, I don't wanna go out and speculate that you are harboring rats. Like, I just wanna tell you, you have a property full of trash. It's blowing over on the neighbor, they're concerned, cleaned it up, like something. Really easy to understand, not this.
Yeah.
Not this, I don't know, it just didn't make sense to me. It felt like it was a. An easy move to send a letter. But if you if you put a fence up and we don't see it, then it's not a problem. I'm like, rats run under fences. Like, what are you talking, like, we sounded silly, I felt like.
Then it's a rep farm.
Well, fences also stop blowing trash, depending on how big the fence is, but. It it's hard because I I've gotta tell you the complaints that I have heard and I don't, you know. I'm not asking the public to start contacting me about these, um, have to do with aesthetics a lot of times. That this, you know, this is an eyesore or something like that, and it's hard to argue with them, but. We don't have a resolution and I I'm not aware of any resolutions that just say. Any property that the county deems to be an eyesore and.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that.
Discretionary that's not a good.
Right, and it it would be very hard to write one that would pass constitutional.
Right.
Now we would be.
Talented, so that's.
Maybe the guidelines in any KES works with them, maybe it was.
Yeah, if 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 there's some other counties.
Yeah, I'm also.
Let's uh.
Let's look at it.
Study them because.
Well, and maybe fifteen years since we adopted ours. Well, maybe we ask them what they would need to accomplish.
Exactly.
What were intended? I mean, maybe, maybe there's cer- certain words wording that if we had it in our resolution. And they're supposed to be coming with the.
Right.
Um, but new, uh, no, the um.
Oh, the new headlines.
Yeah, the sanitation codes for for the county, and maybe that would be something that's incorporated.
Good conversation at the time. I think it's good. As long as we get the ball kinda in play, yeah, I'm I don't have an end game, just let's find a way to solve. Who's the problem?
No, I'm glad that we had that discussion, cuz it's been bugging me and you want an answer for your constituents when. They have, you know, but also you have to have an answer that has teeth, that you can actually do something, right, and not. Uh, talk about harboring rats, mice, snakes.
I'm sure some other guys have more aggressive methods of solving these problems that were not utilized. We just gotta find out how it works and then what what's the line to draw on, which is, that's kind of our tough.
All I'm gonna request from my listener, their um, examples, and I had a couple from KCCA too, so. If we have some examples, maybe we can kinda tweak and tailor and review them and I'll share them with you as I get them. Alright.
I had one other thing, I forwarded an email. I just, what I did is I sent the cities uh, packet for their meeting. We talked a lot or two minutes ago about maybe having a little uh. Blurb in our agenda regarding public comment and how that would work to kinda contain. Not having control of the discussion that goes on sometimes. So, but when they have the public comment, they just make the statement, which I'll I'll just read theirs for this meeting, but. I don't, this is not what this exactly, but it gives us an idea of the framework. For instance, we want to address the city commission regarding items that are not on the agenda meeting, so at this time, when called upon by the, I'll say chairman. Speakers, probably went to three minutes, should give their name and address or address in the commission. Uh, any presentations for information purposes only. Uh, the reason it's phrased that way is. Somebody came to us with a concern, wants to take action that day, but we really don't have all the information, so it's good to say, okay, thank you very much. We got the information. A lot of times it's to redirect to the right department to solve the problem or address concern. So I didn't know. Taking this and modifying a little bit would be something we might wanna put on our agenda and maybe adhere to that, so we're not. Getting into a public comment session that turns into an hour and a half of peat and repeat and. But it we want the information, but I think the message needs to be, it's it's our meeting, it's a commission's meeting, but it's open to the public. You know, the purpose of serving the public, but it's our meeting, so sometimes those public comment sessions, they can like hijack your meeting. And I saw it happen before at City End, and once we started being a little more stringent on this, it seemed to help. Uh, one thing that also helps in some places, they'll actually have public comment first. And then start the meeting and the cameras. I saw just the other day where, God, it was Johnson, somewhere Johnson County, maybe, had voted to start, did you see that? It started, they voted to uh. Do this, do that and have their cameras get turned on after public comment, cuz we had a few folks down there that would show up just cuz cameras were out and carry on. You know, not not been a problem here necessarily, but it's something that keep in mind. That I'm with the input from the public, but it it's just that occasional rogue person who has a passionate concern, but maybe a little. Overpassionate at the moment. We just need to help them figure out some answers and and try to solve the problem with that.
Well, and I think we can also have a crowd that's pre-planned to hijack the.
Right, and this would limit that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I like to keep it, I think it should be part of our video discussion, cuz a lot of times public comment is circulating. In the county and you want it to be an opportunity for us to hear the concern and be able to respond.
I would probably go with that too.
Yeah, I'm just keeping the camera running. I'm just saying, it's it's been done different ways, yeah.
Yeah.
And also, speaking of the agenda, um, it's brought to me of like, the information, so. When, if there's any way that we can add the information to our agenda, more of a packet format. And I don't know if we can do that, but as we're talking about tweaking and different things of like, when they see these things, they're like, well, what does that mean, you know? And.
Goes on the agenda, that's something that, versus the commissioner wants it on the agenda. If this public comment is public comment, out of the public comment time, if someone has an issue we really think we need to address. Then we get more information and have it on our future agenda.
Oh, right.
It's awful easy, you all of a sudden get someone on the agenda that was totally pre-planning by a commissioner, like, I'm gonna throw my little agenda out in there. I'm gonna say it's the public, you know, so we gotta, we gotta be cautious.
No, I'm just, sorry, I I didn't explain that well. If we're talking about changes to the agenda, that that in compare. Comparison to the city, I've heard that often of like, I wish the county would. So when you see the city agenda, you can see all the items and then the backup paperwork.
Yeah.
So that was just something also, but that has brought to me.
Attachment like a PDF, kinda like we do with the uh, E- EMS report.
Yes, yes.
And it would be a a an attachment. I think anything that was maybe getting to. A close to adoption or getting close to uh, an answer or a vote, uh, like if there was.
Sanitation codes.
Room bridge uh, uh, decision or something like that, and then it's like.
Yeah.
Those things would come, and especially when we schedule them a couple of weeks out, then that could hit.
So the public can have an opportunity to read them.
You notice on that, if you tap, it's Google Drive. I think now it was a different format, but I think if you tap on the item, it'll take you right to the documents.
Yep.
It makes it a lot easier to flow and people can find things easier. It makes it a bigger document. That makes a lot more pages, but. Uh, it's mostly drag and drop, plus things in, so I don't think it's, it's big a deal for the clerk's office. It used to be some of the older softwares more cumbersome. But Google Drive is pretty easy and there's there's other ones. There was, I think it was Adobe platform before.
Yeah, something like that would be interesting, be interested in doing it.
Would help us too, cuz if I find myself jumping to find it on this email, it's on the commissioner driver's here, so that would smooth everything out.
And it would have to be developed by each department. And then, because the clerk's office couldn't be putting that all together and putting it on PDF, and then. It would have to come to their office to be, just like Corey does, just like, here it is, attach it. And then it would just be part of the agenda.
But seeing the Google Drive, it's their shared folders, and so actually, in their department, they can do their thing. They'll let them, all they do is just.
Yeah.
Just drop it into the link.
It makes it easy.
Click, you see it. Create the item, the topic, and then I just drop and drive the document into it. So so like for an example on these two purchase orders. When they're on here, if they create the document and send it to you, then you just drag and drop it and it'd be the same as EMS where you click it and this pulls up. Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be.
That'd be awesome.
That would be so awesome.
Yeah, that's what I was kinda hoping to initiate when I first got in here, but we had plenty of it to work on.
But but at least, so so as long as they send them to you.
Right.
Just like in a PDF format like Corey does with EMS, then all you do is drag and drop and it's there.
Right.
Okay, I think that would be a good conversation with department heads up.
Yeah.
Because then, I mean, it sounds like it wouldn't be.
I I don't wanna burden uh, an office with having to create a huge, be in charge of packets of. And it's like, that that wouldn't work, but if it's easy.
Yeah.
For them to do, I I would, I think it's definitely a transparency thing too, so. I'm like, it would be worth doing.
Yeah.
If we can get there.
Yeah, sounds good.
Let me get to, I didn't know who would have have the clerk's office or someone. Or maybe Pat wants to make the verbiage for that public comment part, or just wanna think about it, talk about it next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that I could improve on it.
Okay, I mean, just.
Just change it to county commission.
They changed it two or three times while I was down there. I can just tweak it, you know.
County commission and then upon by the chairman.
I would just say chair.
Chair.
All these gender-specific things, I just keep it simple.
That's one of the more too, all of that.
Oh, yeah, it's all about. It's what we live in.
Okay, I'm just looking to see if we have any other things we got throughout the week that we need to talk about or.
That you wanna do.
Supplemental agreement? Yeah, uh, well, so we wanna talk about that, but.
What? This is interesting.
Yeah. Pat, do you need some time to look into that, to see if we really are? Or if this is, I guess this is utility surveying, which it said right on the initial thing that it wasn't included.
It's all the survey and utility.
Yeah, I I, I think it's okay.
Okay, okay, you had time to look at, perfect. Okay, so I would look um, for a motion to approve the supplemental agreement number one. Uh, to agreement consultant client between Ashson County, Kansas and BG Consultants Incorporated. For Ashson County Roden Bridge Maintenance Facility and Site Programming and Plan Planning Services. Um, this is adding. The scope of work of uh, topographic and utility surveying to include property lines and corners to extend beyond. Client site and nearest utilities. Uh, for the scope of services listed bo- listed above. The compensation to the consultant will be modified and adding twelve thousand seven hundred and two dollars. This is to be paid out of. Our best. Um, okay. You guys need any other information or do I have a motion to approve?
Some of. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
To Pat, executor final contract on the land purchase, due to survey completed was part of that. Will that feed the last cog in the wheel, so to speak, pretty much?
No, cuz I mean, they'll have to do the survey and then, oh. Yeah, yeah, that's the last substitute.
That's last, okay, I thought cuz we had our diligence and all that, okay. No environmental were necessary, as far as we know.
Well, that's a question for them, but it's, cuz it it's included in our agreement and one of the things they're supposed to be looking at.
Okay.
I mean, as far as I know, that's property's only been farmland.
Um, so Scott had sent us his uh, RFP for IT projects. Didn't you guys have a chance to look at that?
I didn't know. You know, I I started to, I did not completely look through this.
Okay.
I, that's something that's so, I would almost need. To go through it with him.
Okay.
Because I'm not technologically.
Do we wanna add him to the agenda for next week, go through it with him?
I think that would work best for me because.
It'd be, that'd be fine, yeah, yeah.
Hey, we had um, Scott Howard, IT director for uh, next week to review his RFP for IT projects, please.
That would, but that need to be executive session with security and those type of issues.
I I hadn't talked to him after seeing this uh, yesterday. Um, I'm not exactly sure what he's trying to address, so if it does need to be, we'll tell you that next week. But probably it would be open session.
Yeah, I think it's more generic as far as overview, as far as services that I would like to.
That is. Well.
And I took it, so.
And also, this document as an RFP will be open to the public for, I mean, cuz it's our.
Yeah, well, sure.
So.
Yeah.
There's nothing.
Sense, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll read through it for them, but yeah, I I ran out of time.
Got it. Do you want a little more time on that resolution? Um, I mean, we we still have an hour and twenty minutes. I'm just looking at other unfinished business. And I don't really have anything else in my inbox, if you guys have, okay.
Yes, uh.
Well, when you're looking at that.
Serious. Look pretty serious.
Yeah.
We had a discussion.
For occurring this with the sheriff.
No, okay. We didn't have a discussion before, she said.
Yeah, I've had. Why not?
Uh, he he said in the evening, I didn't see that.
Right, I saw that, so.
I don't know Suzanne. I don't think it needs to be adopted today. Not aware of any particular pressure, I mean, we need to have the other agreements in place.
I think the new operator's anxious, but uh.
Right, but that's.
Okay, awesome, thank you. I think that sounds good, that.
Well, then the sheriff noted his email and he said it suggested be uh. We pass the new resolution, it'd be just a support rotation. And agreement should be between sheriff, police and tow company, we don't know what thirty over the police and the tow companies anyway, so. I, I think just be sending this and let the sheriff handle it. I think they all worked pretty good on this issue anyways with, I don't see anything issue. If it turns out to be an issue, we'll deal with that, right?
Yeah, I don't think it will be.
No.
I approve this resolution.
Fifteen thirty-nine is the next one I am showing, I don't know if that matches what you have.
Fifteen thirty-nine.
Okay, twenty twenty-four dash fifteen thirty-nine.
I know for something about this, so that it seems. Didn't read the sheriff's email on this, it's been a few days. About five thirteen, he sent an email back.
Well, and just to remind everyone, like, this stemmed from a tow company trying to get added to our vendor list. And getting.
But there's no one, there's no insurance that he will get at.
Well, I'm saying.
I think that's the intent, that's the reason everybody's doing this is to get easier to take care of, I said that to you.
No, but what I'm saying is that. New tow companies can request to be added, they can pass. All, all the criteria, but they're not necessarily gonna get at it. Sheriff could say. I'm perfectly happy with the two of them and I'm not gonna add any. That's the.
So what if we had, we said we're a much bigger county, we've got fifteen tow companies and we can't do a rotation of fifteen, we weren't gonna have three, I mean.
You know.
Process, we do whatever, I mean. Don't have that luxury.
I mean, I, I don't know, but I mean, at, at the time, when they passed this one in two thousand. It was to ensure fair distribution of towing requests. So now there will be nothing ensuring fair distribution of towing requests. There will be no document saying that we're gonna. Uh, consider any application or all applications that are qualified will be added to the rotation, there's nothing. There's nothing to ensure that. I don't know, I'm, I'm just having to hang up with that.
No, I, I, I see your, I see what you're saying, but I'm also in my brain of like. Okay, if we want to approve today and vote to approve Carter's towing to our list. What's the assurance that it gets done? Like, it's not our, in our wheelhouse, it's not us doing it. So, I think it is better off with the user. Checking off the qualifications, vetting them out and adding them to the list than. The Board of County Commissioners involved because we might, I mean, we're not gonna be the ones checking that, like, all the. The items, I don't know, it just, it almost feels like an extra step for the end user of the vendor versus just. Giving one person what they need and that one person is there seven days a week, like, not every Tuesday, like. Oh, now we didn't make a decision, so you gotta wait till next Tuesday, like, it just, I don't know.
And think about this, who, who's gonna call the tow service? It's gonna be an individual, it's gonna be a. It's gonna be a city policeman, it's gonna be a sheriff deputy. But we have control over none of them because the sheriff's in charge of his deputies.
And the police chief's in charge of this.
We're like, you know, we're really kept in the way.
That's how I.
I mean, it was well intentioned, but I, I do believe this, this, I bet this happened when a second tow service came. I'm pretty sure it's what happened.
Okay, where they're like, we don't want one exclusive, we're gonna give the right to everyone, which is what we're trying to accomplish with that in the third. It's just wonky now.
We don't pay the tow bill, we don't impound, we don't, I mean, I, I don't know why we're in it.
Mentioner the, adding a new providers. Do the, it's a rotation on a week by week basis, so the new one probably wouldn't come in for a week or two weeks or three weeks anyway. When their turn would come up in the rotation, so. It, it's going to take a little bit of time to get the agreements done. And especially when we're looking at the first agreement, we've never done one, but we're, we're studying those a little more. Um, so I, I think we can have a draft of that agreement certainly this week. To go out to all of the interested providers, uh, but I don't think adopting this resolution adds. I, I can't think of a really good way for the commission to add another provider to that rotation. Without going through the process that the sheriff is suggesting we go through anyway, so.
Okay. So I would look for.
But should we move this to go into effect later date, or do we? We pass it now, or do we put it on hold for a week while you were, I mean, what's, does it matter, does timing matter?
I. You know, you could ask the sheriff about that, I, I don't. Off the top of my head, I can't think of uh an advantage or disadvantage to being adopted today versus the week from today. But I don't think it makes, I can't see a difference.
So if we adopt this now, there is a possibility we may have some sort of little resolution to adopt later to. Support what the sheriff goes forward with or establish that.
Well, his suggestion, that, that depends on how much control you want to have over the process. And because if you want to have that control, then you would have a resolution to set down what the rules are and the parameters to come up with.
Yeah.
Uh, because you believe that. The public's interests are being looked at by the public servant, the sheriff who's. Doing the agreements, then you probably don't need to have a resolution.
Yeah, and for us, for me, that's getting the phone calls of how do I get this signed up? We pass this and I'm like, you call the sheriff, here's your answer, like, that's. There's been that gray area of like, I don't know what you do, which, it's us, but it's not us, so I just think this is. This is direction that we can give people. So I'd look for a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen thirty-nine. A resolution repealing Atchison County Resolution. Two thousand dash eleven eighty-five concerning a rotation call list for tow service. Whereas in two thousand, the Board of County Commissioners adopted Resolution Number eleven eighty-five. Establishing a rotation towing call list for Atchison County. Ensuring fair distribution of towing requests within the county. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas finds. That the provisions set forth in Resolution Number eleven eighty-five are no longer in the best interest of the citizens of Atchison County. And that a more effective citizen, system for handling towing calls is needed. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners seeks to repeal Resolution Number eleven eighty-five in its entirety. To allow for the development and implementation of written agreements between stakeholders, including law enforcement and service providers. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners. That, that the, sorry, I guess I shouldn't read that, but that's what the resolution is, I'd look for a motion to approve this resolution.
That first whereas fair enough, there's a typo between county and ensuring, it's a comma, there shouldn't be a comma, it should say. Uh, that is the, the prior resolution establishing a rotation calling list. A rotation towing call list for Atchison County and ensuring fair distribution.
Okay.
Uh, so I can just reprint that, just one of those probably.
Yeah, one's fine.
So I would move to pass this resolution.
Okay, it's the um, motion's been made, do I have a second? Okay, I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say, oh, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I just want to say, I, I think I know the intent of this, but I don't think that this will guarantee. Fair distribution of towing requests because it will have, there'll be no criteria to even include. Any qualified towing service, it, it just, so, I, I'm. Disagree.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes two to one. Okay, so. Uh, county counselor updates.
I don't have anything this, this week.
Okay. Um, executive sessions, any need for any additional executive sessions? Uh, do you have a, a motion to approve this week's expenses?
Some of.
As present.
Say it.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Um, so can we just talk through what we needed on the agenda for next week, just as kind of a end of meeting kind of? So we're doing, gonna have a conversation with Scott for the IT projects. I thought there was something else for the twenty eighth, oh, the twenty eighth is when um. The consultants were gonna give us our master plan, correct? So they'll be here. Um.
Walnut Township.
Oh, yeah, and then we would, uh, um, the Walnut Township treasure position that's vacant, we're soliciting. Letters of interest and we will be um, looking at those on the twenty eighth with possibility of. Um, appointment. What else is on? I felt like the twenty eighth was heavy on things, so that's why I just thought we would reiterate, but. Maybe it's just that. Roden Bridge. That was.
And which budgets do we need still? You need Roden Bridge, Knott's Sweet, County Lake. Direct communications.
Are any of them scheduled?
Oh, auditors, when were the auditors coming?
Yeah.
Um, they.
I don't have a date.
Okay, that's fine, so they sent you last Tuesday, cuz we met on Monday for the canvas.
Yeah.
And they sent you their findings.
Their, their draft.
Yeah, their draft findings, and then they're gonna schedule a time to come in and open a meeting and present that to us.
Yes.
Okay, but we're just not sure, um, there is a date. I will not be here on, uh, let's see. June eleventh, so if we could not. Schedule them on that, I'd like to be here for the audit finding discussion, cuz I know that they had suggestions for us as commissioners on how to do better. Things, so love to hear those.
Um, for the Roden Bridge budget, what do you think about June fourth? May twenty eighth may be too soon, I know it's out this week, I mean, we're off Monday, so. Coming back on the first day, it may not be prepared.
June fourth, we do.
Yeah. Were you gonna circle back to the e-store discussion or were you guys gonna put that off after you? Yeah, so I think we'll um, I'll solicit feedback uh from the county attorney and the courts. And then um, kind of wait till those fobs are installed for June fourth, and then we can um, talk about that, you know. Mid to late June, depending on what else, the, what feedback we get, so if the courts and county attorney are in favor. And again, that was not intentional, I just, I did not.
Oh, no, no, I was just asking because I didn't know if you wanted it back on the agenda next week.
I'll think we'll quietly ready next week, but we can have the feedback. And then hopefully I'll have some nuisance examples um that we can kind of talk about, you know.
Oh, are you, who's gonna forward that? Uh, to any KES that.
Is it in your district?
I think it's in mine, but they, they contacted you, so I, I, I just want to make sure somebody.
Yeah, would, do I need that parody? Um, I'm, I'm happy doing that, okay, well, I'll do it.
So when I usually, I'll send it to any KES and I CC patent, so he knows, but at least, you know.
Well, I was thinking.
Keeping him in the loop of what's happening, but.
I mean, I'm, I could do it too, I'm just wanna, cuz sometimes you assume somebody's, yes, I'm on the board too, so. Uh, why don't you include me in on, if you're, if you're gonna send it, CC patent both.
If, if you may give me more information about it, then you can contact him, I'm okay with that, and if, if you're kind of already in the know with them, I mean.
And there's another one off the country club um that I've got a few. Um.
You know, I think I know which one you're talking about.
And so, but, but this is where it's hard, right? Because I know the wording of that resolution and it doesn't make sense for this. So we gotta, we gotta come up with what.
When they put little fence up down there.
Makes sense, um, and then also those areas that are county, but like, kind of. City boundaries, like, yeah, right, city-ish, because it literally is, um, I. You know, think that talking to Curtis to see, I mean, maybe not to the extreme, but like, what the process is. And unless any KES wants to be that person.
Yeah, I would actually, any KES, cuz if, if it's a matter of just paying them a little bit more per year and they provide the more robust. Reporting or enforcement level.
And their defense, I really do think it kind of comes back on us is. What our resolutions says and like, they do what they, they take pictures and send them to us, but like, beyond that, like, it's up to us to.
Well, they do contact.
With the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the letter.
And she'll send us copies of those, so that we know the letters went out, which is helpful too.
Um, the one on Countryside Road, do you have the?
I have the address, yeah, and all of that.
Is that in mind?
Yes.
Others, there's that one, that's the name, and Shelly Campbell did look it up and she may have. Some more information.
Oh, she, she told me that there were no more addresses on the property.
Okay.
So, exactly, you'd have talked to her about.
The neighbors on the support. So.
She said there was.
Yes.
I, I have a question on this, um, because. I don't know what the correct process is, um. I was asked why we don't say. The names and addresses of nuisances in our public meetings, and I just always felt. Like, I, I guess I don't know what the rules are when we talk about other things such as. You know, it's.
I, I think frankly, it's a matter of just being polite.
Okay.
Uh, I don't think it was.
There's not, okay.
To not mention.
Well, and I didn't know if we varied from the city, cuz when you watch there, it's like, there's a presentation, photos and addresses and. And talking like I talked to so and so and this is their plan and.
And I really feel like that's a more fair process for someone who's being. Who owns property, because they feel like they're being targeted, that there's a picture of it and there's record of it and that's something we don't have.
Which I think would be helpful, I think that I would love to develop that process of, okay, here's the photo of the property as of this date. Talk to this person on this date, which I've been keeping my own records on some in my district, but that way, when they come and say. We've made progress, well, here's the photo from last.
Right.
Last August and. Yeah, it, because then it's, it's not that you're being discretionary, it's. This was, you know, I received a call on this date from this person and complained that. The trash is now on them, you know, and we have record, I guess, cuz everything is good with record.
Yeah.
And adding any KES in that equation of communication of, you know, this is what we're doing together to, to try to solve this issue.
And also you have a neutral party there that is, they have to go to court.
Mm-hmm.
They can come and testify and say, this is the conditions, show the court. They really don't have a stake in the game, only that they're professional and then, so there, there is certain aspects of it that do work.
Mm-hmm.
But.
And the letters work when a lot of these properties aren't being lived in, like, no one's there, it's just. How do you correspond? Well, you look on the county of their mailing address and that's how you get ahold of them, you just, so. Um, it'll be good. Okay, so.
Budget workshop day or?
I mean, we have an hour.
Get something, that'd be great.
Alright, so I would look for a motion to adjourn um into a budget workshop until one o'clock. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.